Hey Jill, you had mentioned the, that speaker at NSBA on Saturday. That's pretty good stuff, huh?
Probably the best one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all agreed. It was the most relevant and fun to listen to. And literally the most together like a speech.
Well, I liked all three of them, but he talked so fast. So thank you for sending that Jill. It was great to read it and then digest it because he talked really fast. He was so enthusiastic.
Yeah.
Are we live right now?
Yes.
Do you know? Okay.
All right. Seeing it is eight o'clock, we will call the April 15th School Board Meeting to Order. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Corcoran is here. Member Ketto? Member Ketto is absent. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rayfield?
Here.
Member Rayfield is here. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here and Member Luthner is here. So Member Ketto is absent.
Thank you, Member Clerk. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Reports. The Presale Report, and I believe we have Jody Zespa to give us that report. Jody?
Good evening. So I will try to share my screen with the report and you can let me know. If you're seeing it okay.
There you go, Jody. Yep, you're good.
You seen it? Great. Okay. All right, so we have our presale report for you and this is issuance of certificates of participation and refunding certificates of participation. And you do have a resolution for your consideration tonight too, which will show certificates in the amount not to exceed 7,125,000. We're estimating that the issue will be about 6,830,000 because we're estimating some premium as part of the structure too, which I'll explain again in just a minute. The purpose of this issue is to finance the outdoor facilities that we've talked about for a while. So we're moving forward now with this portion of it, as well as refunding certificates of participation that you issued in 2014 for the ice arena. And the debt service for what we're calling the new money portion will be paid from your lease levy and that was approved by the Minnesota Department of Education last summer. So that, the amount for the first payment due on these certificates is already included in the levy for taxes payable in '21 to finance that first payment that will be due in fiscal year '21-'22. The statutory authority is listed. Let me get back to that section. And again, I should mention that these will not be general obligations of the district, just like they were not when you issued the certificates back in 2014. But payments will be subject to annual appropriation by the school board and that is required by statute. We will have a call date on these certificates also. So we are planning to shorten the term of the existing 2014A certificates by three years. And we'll show you how that will look. And then the call date will be April 1st, 2028 for '29 maturities and later. Little bit of information about the refunding savings that we're estimating. So your existing certificates that were issued in 2014 have interest rates of 3.35% with an average coupon of 5.13% for fiscal years '22 through '34. And we're estimating that we'll achieve interest rates of 2% to 3% with a true interest cost rate of 1.92, again because we're anticipating some premium as part of the transaction. So we're estimating savings of $550,000 over fiscal years '22 through '31. And we'll look at that in the attachments to the schedule in just a minute. And then the net present value still over $400,000 and 15.75% of the refunded debt service. The call date has passed on the, on those certificates, so we'll be able to issue this as a current refunding also. We're also anticipating that the district won't be issuing any more than $10 million in tax exempt debt, so we'll be able to designate the certificates as bank qualified, which helps us with lower interest rates as part of the transaction. And we will move forward with the rating process with Moody's again. And because this is not general obligation debt, Moody's generally assigns a rating that's one or two notches lower than the district's current general obligation debt rating, and that's at an A2 level right now. Little bit of information about the financing. We could move forward with the privately placed lease to secure this financing too, but we expect to get lower interest rates over the term of the certificate. So that allows you to have over, lower payments over the term of the certificates. And then you do qualify for the lease levy to finance the payments on the new money portion of the certificates. And again, that's already in your levy for taxes payable in '21. We will move forward with the competitive sale process, just like we've done for your general obligation debt. And then a little bit of information about the premium pricing structure in the next section too. So generally, we are receiving bids with, with premium price and excess of the power amount, and you're able to use that toward the financing of the transaction. So that allows you to issue just a little bit less in terms of the power amount. A few pieces of information in the other considerations section. So Dorsey and Whitney, your bond attorney, will be preparing a lease agreement and a ground lease and a trust agreement. And then because the district is expecting in excess of 10% private business use by 501(c)(3) organizations, you will need to have a public hearing, just like you did when you issued the certificates for your ice arena. And then we're recommending that you approve a parameters sale tonight. So included in the resolution that you have for you is a not to exceed true interest cost rate of 3%. And we would have then designated individuals that could award sale, assuming that you get a rate less than that. And then we would have the board adopt the resolution ratifying the board at your meeting on May 20th. And that really just gives you some protection because we don't get as many bids on certificates of participation like we do on general obligation debt. So frequently, we may only get one or two bidders. And if that bid would be higher than what we think market conditions should be at that point in time, it just protects you so that you're able to reject that bid. And we can either negotiate with the underwriter or reschedule the sale for another day. We've been working really hard to get more bids on certificates of participation. So we're planning to get this process moving just as soon as possible, get the official statement issued, and you'll see that when we talk about the timeline in a minute. So hopefully, all of that will allow us to attract some more bidders. We've never had to reject a bid. We've always received rates that have been very attractive. So again, just an extra layer of protection in case we would get a bid that's kind of an outlier. We always are keeping track of your existing debt and we'll let you know if there's other refunding opportunities, which there not at this time, but we think we'll be able to achieve some substantial savings for you on refunding of your 2014 certificates. So that's why we've included that as part of this transaction. And then a few items related to regulatory kinds of things, so continuing disclosure, arbitrage information. And then you will be able to invest the certificates, the proceeds from the certificates until the date when you're calling the 2014 certificates and until you need the funds for your project costs on the new money portion of the issue. And then, oops, sorry about that, just to point out that there is an annual appropriation clause required by state law, as mentioned. And so hopefully, you will never need to exercise that clause. So we're just pointing out that if you did exercise that, then you'd have to surrender the possession of the assets that are being financed, and that could impair the ability of the district to obtain financing in the future. And then finally, just letting you know that we're working with other service providers as we move forward with this transaction. So I mentioned that Dorsey and Whitney is drafting the legal agreements. The trustee, escrow agent, and paying agent is US Bank as they're already performing those roles with respect to your 2014 certificates. And then Moody's is the rating agency that the district has used. So we will work with them again. And then a little bit about the schedule going forward. So we have the presale report that we're talking through right now and that parameters resolution that I mentioned for your consideration tonight. We'll get the official statement ready, have a due diligence call and plan to distribute that relatively quickly, so the week of April 26th. And I think Larry and his staff have already been providing us with information so that we're able to get that ready. We'll have the conference call with the reading agency the week of May 3rd. The Tefra hearing, I think the bond attorney has recommended May 20th for that hearing, and you will just need to do that before you approve the, before you ratify the sale of the certificates. And then again, we'll receive the bids and assuming we meet the parameters established in the resolution, you'll, the designated officials in that resolution will be able to award the sale, and then the board will ratify the sale at the May 20th meeting. Closing date is scheduled for June 17th, and we will call the 2014A certificates and pay those off on June 24th. So then we have a number of financial schedules attached. The first one is the combined sources and uses, so showing both the new money portion and the refunding portion of the certificate issue. We have the debt service schedule then for both components of the issue. And then we have the debt service schedule for the new money portion only. And these payment amounts are just slightly lower than what was submitted for the levy process. So when the levy was established, I think this was at more of a level of about 535,000, but interest rates are just a little bit lower than what we had projected at that point in time. So payments are slightly lower also. This is your existing debt service schedule for the ice arena. And you can see, I mentioned that those coupon rates of 3.75% to 5.35% with a coupon, average coupon of 5.13%. This is the schedule that we expect to achieve. So our best estimate is that we'll have coupons of 2% to 3%, and then that true interest cost rate of slightly under 2% at 1.92. And this is what the savings schedule looks like. So because we're planning to shorten the term so that it coincides with the new money portion of the certificates, there's a little bit higher payments that we're anticipating until the maturity, the final maturity date. And then we'll have three years where that, those payments will be completely eliminated from your budget. So saving that 233 to 30, 232 to 234,000 roughly over those three years. So the total savings that we're expecting for the refinancing of this, of the 2014 certificates is almost $550,000. And that is everything that I had to share with respect to the presale report. And then I know you have the resolution also. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about the presale report or the parameters resolution that was drafted by Dorsey and Whitney.
Member Rayfield?
Yeah. So does that represent the entirety of the debt against the hockey arena?
It does, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions?
Member Chair, I just, this is Julie. I just wanted to comment on the amount of savings that we're anticipating. That's a pretty big number for our district. And thank you, Jody. That was a great presentation. And I just think that, you know, we can get such great interest for our district is phenomenal. So thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yeah, we're excited. We've been continuing to see really great bids and we've had quite a few certificates of participation that we've been issuing this year for lease purchases. So all of them have been coming in with just really great rates. So we're excited about that, excited to achieve that level of savings. So keep our fingers crossed now for a few more weeks, right? Another month or so, another month or so.
I just had a quick question, Jody. Did I read that goes through year 2034?
So right now, though, right now that debt on the 2014 issue does go through 2034, but we are going to shorten the term so that we'll be done in, you'll be done making those payments in 2031.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the schedule that we had set up for the new money portion. So when we submitted your information for the lease levy last summer, the schedule for the payments on your new outdoor facilities went through 2031. So we took a look at what the payments would look like if we shortened up the term of the 2014A certificates. And, you know, it just allows you to eliminate those three payments at, you know, roughly 232 to 234,000. And there's just a slight increase in the years leading up to that. So with the great interest rate we expect to receive, we just thought that made the most sense.
Thank you. An excellent presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Rayfield, did you have something?
No, I'll speak to it when we come through for this.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Jody. Appreciate the presentation. I appreciate you guys' hard work as always and ensuring that we're doing the best we possibly can with our money, so.
Sounds great. And I'll hang on in case there's any questions when the resolution is considered, so.
Sounds good. All right, with that, we will move forward. You'll note that the superintendent's report is on the agenda, but that was just accidentally left on there from the last meeting. So this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Seeing as there's no, does any member have anything they want pulled? Seeing nothing. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Ketto is absent. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. And Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye.
All right. Thank you, Member Clerk. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Action Items. Five One, the Forest Lake Staff Retirement. Do we have a motion to approve five one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'd just like to, like to thank the retirees for their service. It's over 70 years worth of service to the district and just to let them know how much we really appreciate their time with our district.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I would also like to say, I really appreciate the long tenure that some of our employees have had, and I know that our families appreciate that. From my personal view, when I've got children that span a large age gap, it's nice to see the same faces from when your soon-to-be 24-year-old goes to school to your now 12-year-old. So that's always appreciated and, and I appreciate their service. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Hey, Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Ketto is absent.
All right, with that, we will move to Five Two, the Resolution Relating to Non-Renewal Probationary Teachers. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Each year, beginning in January, the district and building administrators begin the process of reviewing current staffing needs as in preparation for the next fiscal budget that we get approved in July. That work includes evaluating probationary staff as well. And that is evaluated again, staffing needs, budget needs, staff returning from leave, staff going on leave, retirements. All those different variables come into play in addition to the staffing needs related to elementary sections, middle school and high school sections. That work is done weekly for many, many hours as we pour over this information. So you have a list in front of you of probationary staff that are being recommended for not continuing, for, for not continuation of contract. So it would be a non-renewal of probationary staff, and you have that list in front of you. Again, the reasons are many for a teacher being on that list as a probationary teacher for non-renewal. Now, again, related to staffing needs, budget needs, licensure, class size, and including performance. So given the list in front of you and given that rationale, administration recommends
Do we have a motion for five two?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk?
I was gonna, quick discussion. Just anybody who's tuning in, these were hard decisions that I, I didn't question any of them specifically, but I did make sure that thorough research was gone through for all of them and any of us have that information available too. So it was a, a very fair process and we trust our administration's recommendation.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Rayfield? Member Rayfield votes aye.
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Ketto is absent. And Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye.
All right, motion passes. We'll move to Five Three, Adopt a Resolution Relating to Non-Renewal for the Portion of a Teacher's 2021 Assignment for Which the Teacher Does Not Hold Continuing Contract Status. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along with this resolution is a list of staff members whom this year, for whom this year we extended their tenured continuing contract status contract, from part-time status to full-time status to assist buildings with substitute teacher needs during this special need working our way through the pandemic. So as planned at that time, these teachers will need to move back to their continuing contract status and therefore non-renewing the extended part of that contract that is not continuing contract. So with that, administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion for five three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Ketto is absent. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye.
All right, motion passes. We will move to Five Four, the Resolution Relating to School District Property and Improvements and the Financing and Refinancing thereof. This is what Jody Zespa presented on earlier. Do we have a motion for five four?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Member Rayfield?
Yeah, I would just like to kind of just talk a little bit about, you know, when we took on that hockey arena, right? There was a lot of, lot of people saying, you know, that's not a good, smart financial decision, you know, you're gonna get stuck with a terrible thing. And you know what? They were wrong. We managed that building well. We've had a beautiful, consistent sheet of ice for those skaters, and it's just been a really great thing for our community. And I'm just thrilled to see tonight that we're able to save even more money from what we originally thought. We got that building at a good deal. We've done a good job managing it. And so I'm just all smiles seeing that we're saving more money on, on that financing and that it's gonna be a building, you know, just a great place for kids to skate. And, you know, the other part of this is that we're gonna be financing a lot of other great places for student athletes to work out and, you know, really improve their talents. And it's gonna be just like that hockey rink. We're gonna build something nice. The kids are gonna rise up to it, and it's just gonna be a great thing for this community. So, you know, financing can sometimes be a little bit dry, but what this turns into is great facilities for our kids and a great place where they can be proud of the, of the events that they're in, and the parents can come and really enjoy watching their kids play and, and exceed. And so, yeah, I'm all smiles over this one.
All right. Director Martini, I see you joined us? Did you have something?
Just a couple of comments. In Exhibit A, we're gonna fill in May 20th as the hearing date. And although it will be a virtual meeting, we're gonna provide a 1-800 number for anybody wishing to comment. So those are two items that will fill in the blank, and we ask your approval of this resolution tonight.
Do we have any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to concur with Rob. And well said, Rob. I mean, back then, we took some heat. People just did not think it was a good move for us. But it is a thriving, busy arena, and we're so proud of that. People move into my Summerfield neighborhood because they wanna be by the arena and close to the schools. So it's just been a win-win for us. And I, parents start up conversations all the time. I had asked Steve a question, you know, they'll say, we got that arena for a steal, you know, what do we still owe on it? And, you know, people know that it's a beautiful arena. It's run well. It's busy. And we got a great price on it, and now things are just being made better by lowering this. So it is. It's just a very happy night. So thank you.
Member Chair? Yeah, I was just gonna say, I also wanted to add another kudos and thank you to the FLA, Athletic Association, and that wonderful community group that worked really hard at the initial start of getting this arena. They saw a need and they saw how important it was for our district and, or for the students of our district. And it has just been, it's been a great thing. So, you know, we handle offering such a great education for our students and also activities that they can thrive and love and be proud of to skate at and to be part of. So another, just wanted to thank them again for the initial startup of this and how we did get a great deal from the very beginning. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Corcoran. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Ketto is absent. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye.
All right, motion passes. We will move on to Five Five, the Personal Leave Payout, and we will move to Director Friedman?
Thank you, Chair Peterson. Good evening, Board Members. You have in front of you the draft of a memorandum of understanding. And just to give you a little bit of background on this, our substitute situation during the course of this year has been challenging. We've had a number of staff absences because of the COVID situation, as well as, you know, people's lives continue. By the same token, we've had a drastically reduced number of substitutes, especially earlier on in the year. The substitutes tend to be retirees and they had a degree of nervousness about coming back in and doing substituting. Now, some of these things are alleviating a little bit. The vaccination efforts that the state and Washington County have assisted us with have been priceless, absolutely wonderful. We still do have a challenge, and we are heading into a season of the year where we We still do have a challenge and we are heading into a season of the year where we have a particular challenge in just about every year. We have been having conversation with our partners in this educational endeavor of the FLE bargaining unit, so that would be the teacher bargaining unit, over the course of the year about any number of things that, where we might be able to work together to, as I would phrase it, an overall effort to try to minimize stressors upon faculty and staff members while still providing the absolute best world-class education to our students that we are able to do. This draft that you see in front of you is, it comes out of those conversations as a way that we came up with together to try to address this particular crunch of a problem in this particular year. The foundation that it is built on is within the FLE collective bargaining agreement. It has always, always, for many years it has existed that FLE members have access to a degree of personal leave days and personal leave days here are truly discretionary days. They can be taken, a staff member need not come in and plead the worthiness of their cause in order to take a personal day. So they, they get between two and four personal leave days depending upon your, your length of service. And you can accrue your personal leave days up to five days. So as a staff member, I might be able to have the five days that I had accrued from years past and have an additional two or three or four, so you could have up to nine on the books at any one time. But then when the end of the year hits, you can only carry over five. So what that does is, and if you, if you have more than five, you have an option to take them as payout, so that essentially that those days would be paid out. They're paid out at the substitute rate, which is currently $130 per day. So some people take the payout, that, that, that works for many people. Some folks view it more as a, it's, it's not use or lose, so that's not quite the right terminology, but they feel like it's, I either use these days or eh, for a moderate payout. So what we are proposing to do is for this year only, to create a provision that would essentially double that payout for days above the five-day mark. It's possible for a staff member to request days to be paid out under the five-day mark. It does not happen very often, it's really in a staff member's best interest to have a good bank of days because that's your safety net if something goes wrong in your world. That's your, your, your fallback on, when there's a tree in front of, on your driveway and you can't get out of the driveway. So we are proposing to make this $260 for this year only. So essentially, anything over the five-day mark, a staff member could elect to have those days paid out at 260. They do have another option of if they don't take a payout, it can be translated into sick leave, so that is unaffected. So that's why I say if they elect the payout. So that is our proposal. It is certainly within the realm of what the federal funds that we have been given this year are for. The federal funds have been intended to help school districts try to find creative ways in which to solve problems, try to be creative, try to work together with people to, to, to do exactly what I said before, alleviate stressors on staff, continue to provide high quality service to students. So we are hoping that what this does is target that body of days that people still have accrued to make them less likely to say, yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and try to take a day off and I'll find something to do, which is fine, people can still do that, but we're hoping that this causes some, some thoughts that maybe it might be a little more beneficial to stay and it also would help other people within the, the buildings who end up sometimes needing to cover. So we do anticipate that the cost right now would be probably in the range of about $50,000 more beyond our current expectations. So we are confident that we can address that with some of those, those federal funds. I would be happy to stand up for questions, but other than that, we do request that you would approve this this evening.
All right, do we have any questions for Director Friedman? Member Olson?
Thanks, Donna, I think this is very creative thinking, it's kind of a win-win across the board. I'm wondering, do you know what percentage of teachers you have in excess of five days?
So we have a total list and I think that it comes in, I think that right now it's somewhere around approximately 150. So you're, it's gonna be people who have been here a little bit longer who have that bank of days, so probably, I think it's somewhere between 150 and 170.
Thank you, member Olson, do we have any other discussion?
Well, I don't have, I'm sorry, member chair, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to add that I think it's a great way to utilize those funds and I like the idea of alleviating stressors on staff and so just kudos to everybody that I'm glad FLE was worked with and everybody and thank you, Donna. I think it's a great way, great use of the funds.
Yeah. And I apologize, member Tyson, I sometimes forget about the three-second delay that happens through the Zoom platform or the Google Meet, so do we have any other discussion?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, you still need a motion.
No, I'm aware, but I wanted to make sure we, we answered any questions, I apologize. Do we have any other questions for Director Friedman? Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion for five five?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, do we have any further discussion?
We have one.
Member Luthner?
So there's discussion, not a question. I appreciate that this is an incentive, especially since a lot of teachers have had odd days off through other means throughout the year and they've also pitched in a ton of effort too, so hopefully this incentivizes them to try and make this fourth quarter as streamlined for the kids and, and then they can just take a really good rest in the summer. So hopefully this is put out there in, in the best positive light, but also that they are still entitled and they can still take this time and mental health is still very important, so if it's something that's needed, it shouldn't try and be bought back forcefully, just as an option.
Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, before we go to a roll call, I would like to say that I really do appreciate the collaborative effort that we have had with our staff this year as a whole, all the staff and the teachers group. I know that is not the experience statewide, but we have had a phenomenal collaborative effort in making this a successful school year, so I just wanted to add that in there. And with that, member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Luthner votes aye, member Corcoran? Member Corcoran?
Sorry, yes, aye.
Member Ketto is absent, member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye, member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye, member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye, member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye.
All right, with that, motion passes, we have no new business, nothing under discussion, so a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
I think this one's silly, okay, member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye, member Ketto is absent, member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye, member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Rayfield votes aye, member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye, member Peterson?
Aye.
And member Luthner votes aye.
All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned, thank you everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.